Good afternoon. This special meeting for the Rio Rancho Board of Education for Friday, April 23rd, 2021 is now in session. All please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Kathryn Cullen will be presenting. And please mute your microphones.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
Jessica's girl. I don't know why, but Noreen, for some reason, we can still hear her even though she's muted.
I know, it's weird. Noreen, are you? I'm sorry, I know we're just starting our meeting.
Was unmuted at that time. She was unmuted at.
Okay, it's going on and off. So we'll kind of keep an eye on it through the meeting and see what we can do.
At that time.
Um, Kim. Okay.
No, I wasn't. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we're okay. But let's just.
Here, we're going to ascertain a roll call, but what I think it is, Noreen, is whenever you talk, it's just automatically going off. And I'm not sure how to fix that. So, but. And then Jeff, if you could go ahead and mute your. Oh, we're going to take a roll call. Okay. One o'clock meetings may be our reference. Kim, can you please take a roll call for us?
Well, we can attempt it, yes. President Galbraith.
Present.
Okay, Vice President Morgan.
Present.
Secretary Scott.
Present.
Board Member Cullen.
Present.
And Board Member Coleman.
Present.
Okay, we have all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to our special meeting today. And we're not off to the best start, so hopefully we can manage through this one today. And we want to thank everyone who is here today, those who are visiting with us, and who will be given some commendations later on in this meeting. So Dr. Cleveland, if you can mute your microphone for me real quick, that'd be great. Thank you.
I have some electric.
That's true, sorry. I was just gonna, I heard music and I couldn't tell where it was coming from. Okay, I am going to take a break from talking and I'm going to ask Dr. Cleveland to go ahead and give her introductory comments. Thank you so much, Dr. Cleveland.
I'm surprised. My phone was ringing and I was trying to turn it off. And I will be very brief because we want to get right to the important components of our meeting today. I did want to just say a couple of words. We'll be recognizing a student, Luciano Mendoza, and Jim Gore, who is the automotive technology instructor. And David Latham has a few words that he will share as to why we're commending this young man today and the accomplishment that he has achieved. And we're really proud for him. I did want to comment on, at Board Member Coleman's request, we'll be moving the commendation for transportation until Monday. I did want to just share a couple of other things. This session has been legislative session was very unusual in every single respect, especially in, you know, with regards to access and communication with our legislators. And it was a challenge for everyone. But today, what we're going to have is a review by Chris Bolzano, who is our legislative liaison, and Beth Pendergrass, Chief Communications Strategy and Engagement Officer, will share kind of a summary. Dominica, I believe, is on as well. What will occur today is they will review the legislation that was enacted and signed by the governor, signed into law, especially in those particular bills that are impacting. It is, that's going to be a challenge. People are going to have to, our students are going to have to decide primarily which of the two delivery systems really work best for them. And then we need some consistency in that attendance. And then I would conclude by saying, we definitely have students who are behind in their coursework and in their credits. And so I want to talk to you a little bit this afternoon about what we're doing in that area and what is the plan for helping those students get back on track. So our goal is to help those students who are behind, help them catch up, especially our seniors, so they can still hopefully graduate. And then for the other students at all our grade levels, how can we help them be ready for their classes when they return in the fall, be better prepared?
Good afternoon. This meeting's now back in session and we'll go back to Dr. Cleveland, who was in her remarks when our video feed went down.
Okay. We're going to try this again. So I just wanted to let you know that we will have a legislative summary. Chris Bolzano, who is our legislative liaison, and Beth Pendergrass, who is our Chief Communications Strategy and Engagement Officer, will just wrap up the session for you, talk to you about the bills that were actually enacted, signed into law by the governor, and what those bills would mean to us as a district, what is their impact and what are their implications. I also wanted just to thank Chris for the consistent emails, just, you know, very consistent, regular communication. I found them to be very helpful in staying up to date on what was going on and appreciate the depth of those communications. But also, we had several issues that came up in the middle of the session. And so we needed response quickly, and he was very responsive. Dominica, I think, is on as well. We appreciate her support in this effort, but they were right on it. We talked sometimes in evenings and sometimes on weekends and, you know, and they just stayed on top of it in a year when access to the legislative process was very problematic at times. So I just want to thank them personally for the work they've done on behalf of the Rio Rancho School District. The second major presentation today, and one that we knew you would want to have some time to really think about, talk about, ask questions, would be the failure and attendance, failure rates and attendance plan. And so we'll be talking about where we are currently and what are our plans to assist those students who are behind and help them get caught up so they can either finish this year as a senior or be ready to go on to the next grade level the following year. So we want them to be ready for classes. We want to help them get caught up. I want to stress to those that maybe are behind, there's going to be several opportunities to help you from now till the summer. And so hope you'll take advantage of those, and there is hope, you know, but you're going to have to show up, you're going to have to work hard, have to really apply yourself to be able to get caught up in some cases, especially if there has been poor attendance. The single greatest challenge that we face this year is poor attendance, and it was a factor in both in-person and in-virtual. It wasn't one or the other. But I would say the return to in-person learning has really been beneficial for some students who really struggled with the virtual format. That being said, a lot of our students did really well in the virtual format. We've heard that from parents. They want to continue that option for their children, their family. So the goal, of course, is to provide both. However, there is going to have to be a choice made. And one of the things I've heard particularly from high school teachers is the frustration of students being virtual one day, in-person the next, not knowing when they're coming in, when they're not. And we're going to have to go back to a more structured, one or the other you can choose, can't float back and forth all the time. It just, we can't staff efficiently when students are doing that. And so we hope to get back to a consistent schedule next year and let people choose. And you'll hear a little more about that as well. And then, as you will see, there definitely are students who are behind in their coursework and credits at the secondary level. Credits, of course, are a huge issue. And the presenters will be Renee Salsedo, School Improvement Officer, Janice D'Al, the Elementary School Improvement Officer, Suzanne Nguyen, the Executive Director of Federal Bilingual and Native American Programs, and Rachel Aker, the Assistant Principal for Elementary Virtual Education. So I just wanted to introduce them, and I will turn it back to you, President Galbraith.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cleveland. Appreciate it. Okay, for our next item is to approve the prioritized agenda and propose time allocations. I make a motion to move the first commendation for bus drivers and student transportation staff to our next regular board meeting, which would be on Monday, April 26th.
This is Board Member Jeff Morgan, I second.
There any other further changes or discussion on the prioritized agenda?
This is Secretary Scott. I move acceptance of the prioritized agenda.
Kim, can you make note of that and make that change for the meeting on Monday?
It's already on the Monday agenda, yes.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Do I need to second that motion?
Yes, please.
This is Board Member Jeff Morgan, I second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Noreen Scott and a second by Jeff Morgan. Can you take a roll call vote for us, Kim?
Okay, just to clarify, because it sounds like there are two motions there. And you probably have to, if you've got two motions, you probably have to vote on them separately.
You're right. I apologize.
So why don't we do the first one, which is the motion to move the item on, the item to the 26th, if you don't mind doing it that way?
That is, that is fine. I probably should have done my comment differently, but we can go ahead and vote it that way.
Yeah. Unless you want to combine them into one motion. I mean, you could do that, too.
No, let's just get it over with.
Okay, all right. So this is the first motion to move the item to the 26th. Vice President Morgan?
I second.
Okay, we're taking a vote. Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
And President Galbraith?
Yes.
Okay, and we now have a second motion then to approve the agenda as amended, right?
That's correct. That was my motion.
Okay, and that's Noreen's motion, and Jeff, you seconded that, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll take a vote on that one now. Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
That's five zero.
Thank you. Are you guys hearing me? Okay, is my video coming through? I just keep getting messages that things aren't working. Is it working okay?
You're great.
Okay. I see people's screens go in and out. I see people go off screen, so I don't know what anybody else is seeing.
Okay, okay. Hopefully, we're okay. Okay, thank you, and I apologize. I should have done that differently, but I apologize. So I apologize for that, but we'll go ahead and move on from that. So thank you, Kim. Thank you for taking those votes for us. We'll go ahead and move on to our public comment. We received two public comments, both from Jillian Rourke. The first one was in regards to when they have to make a decision for next year with virtual, and if kids go back into school, what happens if they have to go back online in the end? The second public comment, also again from Jillian Rourke, was a thank you to Board Member Coleman for worrying about our children's mental health and that our children need more support in their online classes and more checks for our mental health as they go through. So thank you for those public comments. We appreciate them. We all have the opportunity to read through every one of those public comments and do read through those public comments. For those who would like to address the board through public comment, please go to the RRPS board page, and you will see a form when you click onto the board page where you can leave your public comments. For our next part, we're going to go into commendations, and I'm going to introduce David Latham. He's our Director of RRPS Career Technical Education, our CTE program, and let him go ahead and introduce those who he's giving commendation to today.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, Board. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Jim Gore. Jim is our Rio Rancho Public Schools Automotive Teacher. He has started a Skills USA chapter. Skills USA is a national student-run career technical student organization for secondary and post-secondary students. Luciano Mendoza is a junior at Rio Rancho High School, was voted the chapter president, and soon thereafter accepted opportunities to attend the New Mexico Skills USA State Leadership Conference. And he competed in the automotive service technology contest. I am going to let Jim Gore explain more about that and introduce Luciano.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for your time this afternoon. So we started our Skills USA chapter last fall. While we were virtual, we managed to come live and have meetings for a couple of months during the end of the fall, and then we got sent back home again. During that time, Luciano was instrumental in forming the Skills USA chapter based on our Student Automotive Club. He was elected president, and then we went to the virtual state conference for Skills USA this year. And it's a leadership conference. Skills USA focuses on providing students with leadership opportunities as well as providing an opportunity for them to demonstrate their skills within their career in technical education specialties. And so we went to the leadership conference, and then we, Luciano was able to compete in a virtual automotive so-called hands-on contest, which included not only job interview skill, but simulated shop work, fixing vehicles in a shop, following safety procedures and all of that. So with very, very little training, Luciano was able to go through the contest, and he actually took home the bronze medal, which is third place, which I am very, very proud of for as little prep time as he had. And it's just, it's all him. It's all, he's got great heart, he's got great hands, and he's very intuitive in terms of his mechanical ability. So he did very, very good. We just wanted to recognize him this afternoon. So thank you. Luciano?
Hello. Is your mic on?
Want to say anything, Luciano?
Thank you for having me here.
We are so grateful to have you here, honestly. I think it is, it is the best part of being on the school board is when we actually get to see the students and hear about your successes, the things that you are doing. And you really show great resilience, just like your teacher was saying, as you didn't get to have a lot of prep work. It's been a crazy year. And despite all of that, that you were able to receive this award. And so we're so grateful that you came on today, and congratulations to you. I'm going to give each of the board members just a moment to talk to you, and if you don't mind, okay? So just give us a second. And before we go to the board, I'm going to ask Dr. Cleveland first, if she'd like to say a couple of words, and then we'll go to the school board, okay?
I just want to say congratulations. It's wonderful to have you here, and it's wonderful to see this accomplishment. We're just so proud for you. And I also want to thank Mr. Gore for picking up this program and building it. We're excited about the future of this program. And so, but what's most important are the students. And Mr. Latham, thank you as well for all your work in getting this program pulled together for our district. And last but not least, the board for being supportive of this effort and automotive technology. But again, we're just so proud for you. So congratulations, and thank you for taking your time and being on with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Kathryn Cullen, would you like to go ahead first? I know CTE is close to Ms. Cullen's heart. Go ahead.
Yes, oh, thank you, and congratulations. And I'm really happy to hear that we've implemented the New Mexico Skills USA within the programs. And I know that it's been a trying year, so it's wonderful to hear that we've been able to get that going and how well you've done. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And then, you know, when I'll come back to you, you're upside down on mine. Jeff Morgan, we'll go to you, and then we'll go to Win Coleman after Jeff.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for representing the Rio Rancho Public School history and continue to get better, continue to take this thing to another level. As they said, if you had more time, you probably would have blew them away. But we're satisfied, we're happy with where you are now, and we know you're going to get better. So keep up the good work, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, and we'll actually go to Noreen Scott. Go ahead, Noreen.
Congratulations. I'm very proud of you for your success, and I don't think there's a skill more necessary right now than being able to fix your own car and everybody else is around you. So I appreciate your energy and effort, and thanks so much for getting this program going. It's really, really exciting for me to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Win, did you get a chance to get back on? I think she's having some technical. I don't see her on my screen. Okay. And once again, thank you for being on, and thank you for letting us just to take a moment. And I know it can be really kind of like a lot when everyone's congratulating you and all these things, but thank you so much for coming out today. Thank you so much, Mr. Gore, for all that you're doing. We just, it's wonderful, the things that are happening in these programs, and so thank you for the time that you're putting out. Real quick, Win, did you want to have a chance? I just saw you were able to get back on. Did you want to say something? Nope, okay. And then also, thank you to David Latham. We appreciate all that you do for the program as a whole. We're so grateful, so grateful for all that you do. So, okay, one more moment. Win Coleman, did you want to? I'm just gonna. Can you hear me now? We can, we can hear you.
Okay, I had to switch to my iPad. No, what I was going to say is how impressed I am that you took something that is hands-on and showed success virtually, and how incredible that is, and what a testimony to your talent. And I just, I'm excited to see how you do over this next year as you go into your senior year. So I'm just curious, if I can ask, if it has been already asked, what are your plans after high school?
I was planning on going into diesel technician, diesel engineering, something with diesel, diesel motors.
Awesome. Well, I just wish you the best, and it's wonderful to have such a great student as part of our district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, and we'll let you guys get back to your day, but we appreciate you coming on today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so we will now move on to reports. Our first report is the 2021 Legislative Session Summary. So we have Beth Pendergrass, our Chief Communications Strategy Engagement Officer, will be here, Chris Bolzano, and also, I know a member of his team will also be on. Chris Bolzano is our legislative liaison, and we're always grateful to have him.
Good afternoon, President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland, and members of the board. I'm very pleased this afternoon to really just turn this time over to Chris and also Dominica, who spent a lot of hours this session, and we were very grateful for them because, as you know, our hands were completely tied with COVID and everything that we've been dealing with, and so we relied on them, I think even more so than we have in the past to track things and keep us updated. And so I am going to turn this over to Chris.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Cleveland. It's good to see you all again. This was a rough fiscal year for us. We cover a total of five sessions, if you really count, in one fiscal year, and all regular session as well. And so it was something completely different that took us get out of comfort zone and think very creatively how to virtually and in a hybrid way also lobby the government relations, meet with legislatures, and successfully push our agenda and prevent any bills that could be detrimental to us from passing. So that was a really interesting thing throughout this year and throughout the session to do it, but we made it, so that's a good part of it. One thing that we started doing, you probably saw that throughout the session, we have been sending you throughout the session the newsletter, and probably every other day you receive updates on what was happening in session with the information that you needed. One of the things that we, at the beginning of the session, thought is how we can, you know, take it out, all the data, and just provide you what you need to see there, and if there is a need for a depth view, you know, could reach out to me. So you'll probably be receiving those newsletters on a weekly basis and also on a daily basis with updates that were needed to you to know on what's happening in education and also in economy in our state indirectly, directly related to our district, to Rio Rancho and our city. So that was one of the things that we added on, and we're going to keep that. So keep an eye on your email for our newsletters that come every week and with the updates for the interim that's coming up. We have Dominica with me here. I'm going to just let her very briefly say hi, introduce herself. You probably receive emails from her as well, so that you can connect the email with the face. Dominica, if you want to briefly take over here, and then we enter our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, everyone. It's nice to meet you virtually because of COVID. I'm looking forward, you know, to keep working with you guys. So if you have any questions during interim, you have my email. Feel free to reach out to me or Chris, and I'm looking forward to keep working with all of you guys.
Thank you, Dominica. All right, let's jump in on our presentation, and then I kept this really simple so that way we can have the one-on-one if you have any questions or any comments. So next slide, please. That was just a reminder of our, you know, our dates. As you know, the session started on January 19th, ended on March 20th, that's Saturday, and the governor had until April 9th to act on legislation. Then we entered on a special session, and most of the bills on that special session were already acted, but she hasn't, she had, had until April 20th to do that. And we know already that we are expecting another special session coming up on the fall. We don't know yet dates on that. There is conversations happening, and that's something that we will keep, continue keeping updating our newsletter as that develops. But just reminding you, this is pretty much what happens every year when it comes to the dates of our regular session. Okay, so during this 2021 legislative session, there were about 916 bills in that legislation. That includes the bills, memorials, and resolutions that were filed. Our school district tracked about, let's see here, 337 of those pieces of legislation. This is just giving you, you know, some of the, you can have a view of how many bills ends up actually in the governor's desk, the statistics of the numbers, and the proper date that that bill actually will be signed by the governor. Then I want to go a little bit and talk to you guys on, okay, from all those bills, Chris, what exactly has a direct impact, a short-term and a long-term impact on education? Let's go to the next slide. So House Bill 2, the general fund bill, to not be confusing with the cannabis bill, which is House Bill 2 as well for this special session. The House Bill 2 general fund, we see here. We have no really major lines or items that are vetoed by the governor when it comes to the higher ed and PED. We did not pass any hold harmless. We were working really hard for that from happening. We had a bill sponsored by Representative Andreas Romero, which is the Chair of the House Education. He was working really hard to make sure that we had a piece of legislation, a bill itself that would provide us hold harmless on our operations, on our cash balances, but that didn't go anywhere. We had a lot of resistance on that, but there is language of hold harmless provision included on House Bill 2. I highlighted there the transportation salaries, the major aspects, what is there in numbers when it comes to the House Bill 2 and education that you need to know there. And I believe you already got the chance to take a look on this presentation, but that kind of gives you a summary, okay? What are the most important things on House Bill 2 right now on education that the legislature did? And I put the funding right there for you so you can take a look. When it comes to community schools, something interesting, you know, we did have a bill there that would appropriate. that would appropriate about $20 million for that. But it was vetoed. And, and, but there is $5 million there like it is every year. That was one of the things on, that I thought that was interesting through, through the session. Let's go to the next slide. And then comes to, you know, to our long-term and short-term impact legislation. With every session, you know, we, we see that there is educational factor, a large part of the conversation during every single session because it does take a big chunk of the state budget. The state budget to public school support was increased about 7.2% with the SEG funding included for extended learning time programs like you saw on a, on a previous slide. But in, in, in this, when you look at those bills, we, we see that in the end, the legislature did pass, right, the, the hold harmless mechanism also for transportation, which was something that was in our agenda and our priorities to allow transportation distribution to be, to be based on the 2019, 2020, on those numbers. At the beginning, they were trying to make an average of five different fiscal years. But we end up successfully working with our colleagues up there and, and say, okay, let's, let's agree on, on, on this number. And that was the number that they agreed to do that. They didn't pass, again, a hold harmless mechanism for operational funding. But they did encourage the districts to budget for student enrollment grow with as much occurrence as possible. And that was the message that was up there on, at the legislation during the session. And, and, and working really hard with the Chairs of Senate Education, House Education. We were able to put the hold harmless on transportation, a list for that. Now, with the legislation with immediate impact, see here, let's pull long-term. Just a second, my notes here. There you go. With long-term's impact, we have House Joint Memorial 5, which is the funding formula exchange. So, with the removal of the impact aid and local credits of the State Equalization Guarantee Fund, which was on HB 6. So, there's some new approach on the state revenue sources for the district operational budget. So, as such, we will be monitoring the interim study of this change of the state equalization guaranteed. So, in the study of this formula, the goal here during this interim is that the Legislative Education Study Committee will take a dive look into the, the formula and what needs to be changed. Hopefully, you know, the changes that come up to that will also help us and help the profile of our district. And to do that, we just have to make sure we are monitoring and we have a seat on the table, working together with our delegations and the members of House Education, Senate Education. And then we have House Bill 128. That's a bill that relates to school districts that may or not need to revise policy procedures and practices around ethic conduct for employees. The, the, the whole pass and trash possibilities that less likely across around the state. Then we have the Senate Bill 43, which is a bill related to tear down old buildings under the PS COC without any local match requirement. The school districts don't have to do that anymore. And House Joint Resolution 1. With that, we, we, related to, you know, the early childhood and K-12 education. I think that would follow more into the long impact. We could say that as well. I can see that. Some can argue that. With this joint resolution, pretty much the easy way to remember this is, you know, what's a possible source of funding to extend learning time programs? This is something that is gonna come up for voters in New Mexico. So, they're gonna have to approve that to be able to do the constitution, constitutional amendment to increase the distribution of, on the permanent land grant. And elections don't come for that until the following year. So, there is plenty of time for that. So, we can look at that as a long-term yet because it has to go to the ballot. Voters have to vote and then goes back to the session and they have to take a look on all that. How is that going to be done? Let's figure, can go now to the, with the short terms? Yeah, there we go. So, I already talked to you a little bit about House Bill 2, the major aspects on that. We have the House Bill 285, which was the capital outlay projects. And you, you should receive a PDF file on that. But if not, it's in this presentation here. And I can provide one as well. So, you can see our requests if you need it. Then we have SB 17. And that bill, let's see here. It's a, it's a piece of legislation that goes into the high-poverty elementary schools, supplemental funding to boost the PED through the pilot programs for measuring poverty, poverty and directing funds directly to poverty schools. That's the whole focus on that. It is about $30 million that will be distributed over the two, of two years. New Mexico PED will partner with the Taxation Revenue Department using the data of the rank of the school by property measurement. The big controversy about this bill during the session was that a lot of legislators were concerned about, you know, wait a minute, you're gonna access families' tax returns and personal information? How can you guarantee to us, you know, that information is not gonna be given to PED? And this profiling, right? And also privacy of families and individuals. But that's something that is there. It passed. The focus here had to do with the family income index that may connect to a larger, even interim conversations about how to do that. And all around the Yasi Martinez idea and, and concept that every session, right? There is the discussion, what bill we're gonna bring on that. And that was one of those bills. Then we have SB 40 and the, the K-5 distribution. This is a, the K-5 plus involving a way for a programmatic conversation into the calendar reform of our school. Pretty much, you know, what they're doing is making easier for school to add and maintain that 25-day of the calendar from now into the future and change the K-5 plus status, giving flexibility to teachers, students, flexibility to assessment and that flexibility to edit that 25 days. So, schools are doing that differently, creatively, how they're thinking on, on how to approach that. So, we just have to strategically, the team there, the cabinet, figure out all that. Because I think there is some loopholes that perhaps in the end, the sponsor might come up next session and make some changes on that. But that's pretty much when it comes to the virtual session. Those are the long-term, short-term bills that we, we are watching closely. And, and we'll see how that takes into place and watching closely the Education Study Committee during interim. Next slide. So, when it comes to the junior bill, we secured $262,000 for a career technical education program. There is also a reframed program at the Rio Rancho Middle School. We secured the $125,000. Next slide. Did we skip the capital outlay slide for any reason? Could you go back before the junior bill? Just double checking here. We probably did. All right, let's go to the next slide. Can I always go back and send to you guys what the, what we have there? So, and then we comes to interim, the interim session that is coming up. Actually, it's kind of interesting to see that, next slide, please. That next week, the LFC is already having a meeting. So, I don't know the urgency of that, but we're gonna be there. We're gonna be monitoring. We, we're still waiting generally during interim. What happened is in May, they, the, the committee gets together, open their agenda and say, okay, let's check out any memorials or any House Joint Memorials or, you know, and, and see if there is any, anything that we need to do. So, we, we know that the equalization guarantee is going to be won. But this is something that I'm watching right now, what, why LFC is meeting so early already. And taking a look and see, you know, they're, they're watching close those federal stimulus funding that is coming into the school districts. And, and they're looking into as well the, the capital outlay reports and what school, school districts are doing with all that funding. So, it's important for us to, to keep our eyes open or ears, monitor that, share, communicate. And making sure, because there is, there is, sometimes it is this message at the state legislature where, oh, the schools, districts are, are getting tremendous amount of money from, from the feds. But they don't, it's our job to educate and make them understand that, yes, we are receiving funding. But they are, there is a framework. There are things that are attached to that. There are rules that we need to follow. And in the end, you know, it's not that we have the full flexibility to use that funding to whatever we want to use for. So, it is a lot of money. That is true. But it's kind of, every session, it's kind of like this, again, reminding them that, yeah, we are receiving this funding, but there is, there is rules that we have to follow from the feds that we cannot use to offset anything that is operational or transportation and, and our needs of our school district. So, with that, I, I, I just leave, you know, for questions or comments that you may have. And, and like I always, you know, if we don't have the time right now to talk about everything, I'm more than happy to Zoom meeting with you or meet over a cup of coffee and, and we can talk more about it. Anything that you need on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming on. I'm gonna see if Dr. Cleveland wants to make some comments before we go to questions from the board. Go ahead, Dr. Cleveland.
I just have a question, Chris, on the reframed money. When Representative Padre Culbert called me, she initially said it would be for independents. And then we talked and she said it would go to the Student Support Center. And now I see it's a Rio Rancho Middle. And, and reframe will be moving to the Student Support Center. So, do you know who we should talk to about the process for getting the money redirected to the right location now? I'm just amazed. I have no idea how it ended up at Rio Rancho Middle because that was never even part of the discussion.
Yes. I, I, when that money comes in, I know from the junior bill is a sign, and Beth, if you can correct me, is a, is a sign to the PD and the PD comes and distribute that into the school districts?
I actually would have to defer that to Lauren. I'm not sure about the appropriate process for that.
Dr. Cleveland, I, if, if we don't have that answer, I know who I can talk at the legislature that will know that answer exactly. I don't know if Lauren is gonna add anything, but I know exactly where to find. And I want to know that as well. I know how the capital outlay works, but that's actually a very good question, like how the junior bill money comes, who is distributing that money to who and how, how much flexibility we have when a program is moved on that process? I don't know if Lauren has anything to add on that.
I can understand how it happens. I, you know, my question is just, how do we get it fixed? So, you know, and Lauren may know how we get it fixed. I, I don't know. But I, I was just surprised when I saw it because that had never even been mentioned as a site for it at all. Lauren?
Madam President, this is Lauren Hatch, General Counsel. I, I don't know specifically, but I'm pretty confident we can figure it out. We'll work together to figure it out.
Really thankful for the money. I mean, we could certainly use it at the Student Support Center. I need it there. So, it, it's very, you know, thrilled that it happened. It's just, we've got to try to get it now to the right place.
Anything else, Dr. Cleveland, from you? Okay, all right, sounds good. All right. Good question, actually. I'm glad you brought that up because I wasn't thinking about all those different things. Okay, let's start with Catherine Cullen.
Hi, Chris. You mentioned that you didn't have the capital outlay slide on here. Oh, what did, what did we get in reference to capital outlay?
Yeah, so I just, I was opening this here while you guys were talking. We have the Rio Rancho Robotics Program, $150,000.
Okay, so that's the only capital outlay that we received with, with the, the robotics?
Yes, that's the capital outlay to receive.
Okay, all right. And then, so it was going through our transportation when you were, I know we'll have to just talk this in the budget. So, are we expecting a, sorry, I'm going back in my slides. We still looking at a million-dollar shortfall on, on transportation? Mike might be on the call. He might know. Because it looks like the, yeah, the funding, the distributions, but I wonder how we fared on that. Do you know, Dr. Cleveland?
I do. You know, this year, we did fine. And Mike, if he's on, can jump on. This year, we were fine because we didn't transport that many kids.
Right.
So, the, the whole discussion about hold harmless was hold harmless what? You know, this year or last year. But if we get what we had last year and our ridership goes up, then we'll be short again. So, to your point, it's not a really hold harmless of what we need. It's a hold harmless of what the number was prior to. And, and they were very clear this year. And, and Chris, you can add anything you want on that. They weren't interested in fixing the transportation problem, the big one. All they were interested this year is hold harmless for the year before. And, and so, they just continued to order, to disregard the, the court order. And so, I talked with both of the attorneys for Yasi. And so, we've got to keep this up at the, the front of that lawsuit. Because Judge Singleton did say that they had to pay for transportation and they willfully didn't do that last year. So, but the lawsuit is not over and that still is part of it. And we'll continue to push it directly with the Public Ed Department. But if that fails, then we'll push it through the Yasi Martinez lawsuit. Because the judge was very clear in her ruling that it won't be fixed. So, it won't fix the shortfall if we have the same number of kids ride as we had last year as opposed to this year. The, the big unknown right now is we don't know how many are going to ride, period. And so, that was one of the reasons they were nervous about doing a hold harmless. Now, district is seeing the same level of ridership right now, of course, that they saw a year ago. So, they don't, you know, they said, well, we don't know if we want to fund that. Well, the bottom line is the driver's salaries cost the same, the insurance costs the same, the fuel costs the same, whether you're carrying 20 kids or 60 kids. The costs are basically the very same. So, I think that was the factor that finally led them to say they would hold harmless. But yes, we could still be short as we were a year ago. But we were not short this year. And that came up a couple of times when they said, well, I don't know what you're, you're concerned about. You look just fine this year. Well, of course, we did. We, our ridership is very, very small compared to an average year.
Right. And it seems like we continue to see this getting kicked down the road. And we keep hearing that they're going to fix it for us. But again, they didn't. So, yeah, they fixed it for this year because we, but because we're fortunate. We didn't, you know, we weren't running them. But we're gonna be in the exact same situation next year, I think. I mean, we'll, we'll have to see what our numbers are. But still, the cost is there. And we keep continuously hearing this. And I think that Yasi, hopefully, will somewhat fix it. But we keep hearing, oh, we fixed it. You guys look good. They've come and looked at our books. They've done, they've done so much and we still have this problem. So, unfortunately, even during this session, they still haven't fixed it. Okay, thank you.
Mike Baker, did you want to add anything? I just saw that you're unneeded.
Yes, Dr. Cleveland, President Galberth, members of the school board. We are anticipating a million-dollar shortfall for, for next fiscal year. This fiscal year, we will likely have a shortfall. I kind of been following it. It's been going all over the place. Like Dr. Cleveland said, even though our ridership has been down, we still have to run essentially the same amount of buses. We still use about the same. amount of buses, we still use about the same amount of fuel. And so we will likely have a pretty, a pretty good deficit this year. We will see that, and we will report that fairly soon.
Okay, thank you, thank you for sharing that. Catherine, anything else on your end? Okay, okay. All right, we'll go down to Noreen Scott.
Chris, I apologize if you've already answered this, I lost my feed for a few minutes. But my question is about the school that was our old Stapleton, and then it was Shining Stars, and we're in the process of reclaiming some of those buildings. Is there a reclamation piece to that destruction of old buildings? In other words, you know, if we have to do any remediation to the land, or is that covered, or is it just the demolition of the buildings?
Mike, do you want to answer that? I saw most of the properties on the building on the site, but I don't, I don't think there was anything hazardous on the site whatsoever, but maybe Melanie could also answer that.
Yeah, I know that the buildings, we sold the buildings, they are being dismantled and taken away in regard to any type of hazardous material, not aware of anything. Once we get the property appropriately cleaned up, we will likely put it up for sale. That's kind of the process that we're going through currently.
Well, that was my question for Mr. Bolzano. Is there funding in that bill that passed for us to use at that school?
There is no funding to be used at that school. The only thing that the bill does is having the school district access funding to tear down old buildings from the PSCOC. Now, PSCOC, which is like stealing for Peter to give it to Powell, now has to work on getting securing funding so that the school districts can come now and get the funding from them so that they can do that with all the local match. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeffrey Morgan, you have any questions, comments?
No questions, but just wanted to tell Chris thanks. Thanks to you, Jane, appreciate all the information and all the emails.
Thank you. And Winn Coleman?
Yes, when it comes to the money that was awarded for reframe, what I'd like to just understand is the transition that it went through. I mean, I know that, and I caught that it said Rio Rancho Middle School, but I'm just curious, as it's, it sounds like it started out as Independence and then went to reframe, and how that all came about?
It all came about by Representative Padre Culbert calling me one evening about 9:30, and she was still on the floor, I think, and asking if we could use money for reframe. And she thought the term was reframe, but I said, no, it was reframe. And she said, well, we might, you know, use it at Independence. And I said, well, reframe is not at Independence. Reframe is a district-wide program that allows students who might have a situation where they could be suspended to continue to come and get their work done with additional support, but it isn't, it isn't located at Independence. And so, and I explained to her the new building, and that that's where reframe would be moving to. And she said, okay, you know, that sounds like that's where I want. So her desire was to fund reframe and wherever that program would be. And she just was under the impression that it was located at Independence.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question that I had. Thanks, Chris.
All right, and thanks, and Dr. Cleveland on that one, if we can just, when you update, when you find out that information on that, I would be curious to know, and I'm sure you will update us, but I'd love to have that when you give us that superintendent's report, when you do kind of figure out what the best way to go about that is, and what ends up happening with that. So, okay. Chris, is there any wrap up that you, any other board members, actually, before I go to Chris, anything else that you wanted to ask that came up as we went through everyone else? Okay. Chris, is there any wrap up you'd like to do on this?
I just want to let you know that in your shared folder, the PDF file with the capital lay in junior bill should be there, so you can take a look. And as always, you know, if you do have any specific questions and want to talk to me, you got my number, please reach out. If you hear anything during interim, let me know. And I think this is crucial, that we all work together during this virtual world that we are in, especially during the interim. And I'm here to help with whatever you need. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We really appreciate everything that you do for us. We appreciate those emails, I love reading through them and seeing everything that's going on. So thank you so much for keeping us informed and on everything, and thank you for fighting for our schools, we appreciate it and everything that you do. Okay, thank you. Okay, for our second report, our second report is on failure rates and attendance plan. And we have Renee Sosado, our Secondary School Improvement Officer, Janice Schenalt, our Elementary School Improvement Officer, Suzanne Winn, our Executive Director of Federal Bilingual and Native American Programs, Rachel Akers also here, our Assistant Principal for Elementary Virtual Education. And I will let you ladies take it away.
Good afternoon, President Galbraith, members of the board, and Dr. Cleveland. As you are aware, last legislative session, this ties in nicely in 2019, there went into legislation the attendance plans for success under the Success Act. And with that, a requirement to, for every school to do an attendance for success plan, and our district had to have a plan. And within that, they defined four tiers that all students need to be placed in and monitored throughout the year. Part of that requirement is that we share that update with you annually, so that's what we're here to present. I know you received a lot of words in this presentation, I'm not going to read everything for you, we just wanted to make sure that you had all that information to browse at your, at a rate that you could absorb it all. Next slide, please. This is just a list of all the definitions. What's important about this is when we think about absences, we tend to think about unexcused absences. But the state actually defined chronic absenteeism as all absences. So regardless of whether or not it's excused or not, it's considered chronic absenteeism if a student has been in our schools for 10 days or more, and they miss 10 or more days for whatever reason. That has made this year very complicated, and we'll talk about how we tried to navigate that with a separate code here in a little bit. But that really complicated looking at our numbers at the beginning of the year. Next slide. It was, as you've heard, very difficult to consider attendance. Attendance is not something that was messy prior to this. You know, we definitely had conversations with parents regarding attendance at every level, but we never had to redefine attendance before this year. And absences were not necessarily a reflection of how students were doing. We had some students who weren't attending Google meets or showing up, but they were doing the work and they were doing a really good job. At the beginning of the year, we started at, we tried to have work completion as part of attendance so that we could give them credit for what they were doing. But then that was very difficult because teachers weren't seeing students face to face. So in November, we revised that attendance policy, which you have a link for here, to reflect attendance as being they had to participate in the Google meets. And then we would evaluate their work and their work performance separately. So we made that shift in November. Next slide, please. This information comes directly from the attendance plan that the state provides us. So you can kind of see our district overall absence rate in 2019, 2020 was much smaller, and that's because a lot of it, there was a huge virtual piece that was in there, so we didn't really consider attendance for that. What's interesting with this is you can tell is that our chronic absence rate for elementary and secondary for virtual students was pretty high. And again, that's a testament to how do we take attendance in secondary? What does that look like in elementary? And it's different in secondary because they go class by class. In elementary, we were waiting to do attendance at the end of the day instead of the beginning like we typically do, because we wanted to make sure that students were attending Google meets throughout the day and then do the attendance at the end of the day. Next slide, please. Again, this all comes straight from the plan and the information that the PD is sharing with us. So one of the things I want to point out is they asked us to compare 1819 data to this year. They asked that we don't use 1920 data because of schools being shut down. So when you see the actual chronic absence rate, that's for this year, and then we set a goal, excuse me, for 12% as a district. So overall, so far at this point, we're at about 19.68 chronic absenteeism, which again is 10 or more days. Next slide, please. I know this is really small, I apologize, I had to copy and paste it in three sections for you, so it's not perfectly aligned either. However, what I wanted you to be able to see is if you look at 1920 and 1819 and now, we are really not that different than we were in 1819, which was really surprising. We didn't expect that. We're actually pretty close at almost all of the schools. And in some cases, we're doing better now with our attendance than we did in 1819 when we are fully in person. That was really, really surprising. But you can see some stark differences too in some of the schools. So every school had to take this information, write a plan at the beginning of the year, and then we monitored throughout the year. They had to have an attendance team and monitor attendance and really work on attendance the entire year, and you'll see an example of that here in a minute. And then everybody has to do a reflection plan at the end of the year, including us here at the district. Next slide, please. It breaks it down by subpopulations. We wanted to share that information with you so you can see what it looks like. We have had some complications with attendance with some of our Native American students because they've had restrictions or Wi-Fi issues. So either they couldn't attend in person, or there were spotty Wi-Fi issues, even though we provided hotspots. So Suzanne has been wonderful in working with our Native American communities, and we're really working with our staff to understand those complications and work with families, still reporting as we're required, but working to provide them the support that they need. And moving into next year, we need to continue to do that. Next slide, please. And then you can see by grade level. Next slide. That's just for you to smile. Next slide. Okay, and again, a lot of words, so I'll just summarize for you. There's four tiers in the attendance plan. So tier one is what we do for all students who've missed fewer than, you know, just a few days. And this is just a list of a lot of things that we've tried to do to support our students. The most important thing in Rio Rancho is our Positive Behavior Intervention System. We did have ripples this year as some social emotional support, but there's a lot of other programs that our schools use to support students. I can tell you, especially our assistant principals at all levels have worked extensively with our families and reached out to them to work on attendance, have conversations. Parents were frustrated at different times in the year for lots of reasons regarding attendance, and our assistant principals typically are responsible for that and have done a remarkable job and actually are working together as a PLC to talk about attendance next year and how they can support one another as a district. Next. You'll see some examples on the next slide of just what individual schools have done. A lot of this is documenting in Power School, contacting teacher logs, the overall tier one strategies that have been done, and then it defines for you what tier one is. Next slide. And I don't have a picture of it here, but at one of our elementary schools, they gave away bicycles. So they had an attendance competition and gave away bicycles to students for perfect attendance, and they had a really high perfect attendance rate. So tier two is more than 5%, and it's targeted towards individuals. So now we're getting into referral forms, we may be looking at sending truancy letters, having truancy officers getting involved, seeing what supports the families need. Next slide. Oh, we do have Engage New Mexico on here, and Renee will go into that in greater depth on a specific slide. Sorry, next slide, Jane. And again, examples from the schools. I had everything on here, and there was even more. So we tried to just narrow it to the most important examples specifically from our schools. Next slide. Tier three are those who are chronically absent. So 10% or more that they've missed. And what have we done to try to reach out to them? And really, it just comes down to more individual contact. The teacher at this point is reaching out to the principal, to the counselor, to the social worker, to student services, and really just trying to connect with the parents to figure out what we can do to help them and provide them what they need to get them either on the Google meets or at school. We've delivered paper resources to families when they weren't able to access the internet. We've had visits at homes. We had a school go and deliver backpacks of supplies to students right before second semester, so they would have what they needed to make sure and say, you know, we're really excited to see you come back, and here's a backpack full of supplies that you'll need. So everything from personal visits to phone calls to reaching out to support a district office. Next slide.
Tier three is where Engage New Mexico came in. And at the end of last school year, they only worked with secondary students. This year, they started with elementary also. And Jane, if you could go to that website, please, thank you. We get reports from Engage New Mexico, and this is an example of the one that we received. We get them about every other week. So they, they had, in just that reporting period, they made 7,277 calls for 1,500 students. We get the reports on how many students they've actually contacted and how many they were unable to contact, and how many they're continuing to contact. You can continue to go down, Jane. The students that they were able to contact, did they participate? And so they have different levels of participation, and I'll give some examples at the very end of this, but sometimes it's just a phone call with encouragement, sometimes it's actual tutoring, and they have that leveled out in different ways through Engage New Mexico. And really, all that Rio Rancho Public Schools has to do is give them a list of names. So what we've asked the schools to do, and usually it's through the counselors or assistant principals, the students that you've just tried and tried and tried to reach, but you can't seem to get them to school or contact them, we've submitted their names to Engage New Mexico. They break it down by grade groups, so there's like grade five through six, the middle school and high school, and they separate out the seniors. Right now, they're working with 34 seniors on that last pie chart. You can go on down, Jane, thank you. Keep going. Little bit more, there you go. The kinds of interventions that they do, you can move on through, and the percentage of students that are working. And then on this last chart, it talks about the different interventions that they actually do. Can you make that, yeah, thank you. So the types of intervention, sometimes they just, they have encouragement and support, so it's just, you know, someone calling. And sometimes they, families, you know, we've tried to call, but for some reason, they connect with the person from Engage New Mexico. They have tutoring sessions in addition to ours. They also provide resources in the community, whether it be for mental health or medical, other medical reasons. So there's all different kinds of opportunities for families that Engage New Mexico offers. You know, when it's been something, like we had a couple of students, they also look for barriers, reasons that you're not getting your work done, or you're not going in, whatever it may be. And when it's something that Engage New Mexico really feels like the schools could take care of, they let us know. So one time, we had a family who said that they didn't have Wi-Fi, so they let us know so we could make sure that they had a hotspot. or if their computer wasn't working, you know. So if it's really something that we can control here, they make direct contact with us. So they've been a wonderful partner to have, and that's a level, a tier three intervention with our students.
We recently had a situation in elementary with a family that moved out of state, and Engage New Mexico was still in touch with them. They had two deaths in their family, tragic deaths in a short amount of time. The mother had lost two of her children. And they reached out to us and said, we're not sure what this family's doing, or if they're going to come back, or if they've enrolled. Can you reach out to the school? And Vicky Calzada reached out to me. I called the school. The school knew what had happened with the family, but called the family, found out where the family was to make sure the family was okay. And that is just one example of the partnership that they provided. And it just, it felt like it was a true wraparound, really care and concern for a family. So that was great. And we mentioned Vicky Calzada. She's been a great help with the data. And Paul Lockhart has also helped a lot with Engage New Mexico in making sure our schools are getting the support and the resources they need.
And then you can go back to the PowerPoint, please, Jane. Yeah, thank you for mentioning Vicky and Paul. They've really taken over this process, getting the names from the schools, turning everything into Engage New Mexico. They've done a lot of work on it.
I wanted you to see an example. This is one of our elementary schools in how they are tracking their students and who they're keeping, you know, how many absences they have, what support they have, what needs they have. And I just thought this was such a great visual just to show you the links that our schools are going to, to make sure our kids are being taken care of. Next slide, please. And then tier four is that extensive support where we may be reaching out to CYFD to help us to see what we can do for the family. You know, we feel like we've exhausted everything within our district we can do, and we really need, really need more help. And Renee, you may want to speak to some of the secondary supports that are on here.
We have, so with the Secondary Learning Center, you know, some students, well, and this year is different, but that's where we offered reframe or night schools for students who at, previous to this, were not comfortable in the larger, larger schools, or something's just going on in their life at the time that they really need that, that smaller setting. There's the grads program over at IHS. And of course, our two wonderful alternative high schools, Independence and Cyber, which offer very great supports for students who need them.
Next slide, please. Just a narrative that when you look at it, when you go back and are able to review that data, we are not, we think we're in such a dire situation because it's been a very difficult, challenging year, and we've heard a lot of frustration from, you know, parents and staff about attendance. When you actually look at the data, we're not that far off from when we were in person. That means our schools, as challenging it has been, are doing a really good job of trying to get our, our kiddos in and support our families. When we did this as a district plan, I just want to include, you know, we, we included student services, special services, federal and bilingual programs, RADA. We had every department involved in creating this plan, so we were capturing all of the, the students in our district. And so I want to make sure they're all recognized too.
Jen, I'd like to add one thing just, just quickly to that, if, if it would be okay. One of the things that the charts at the beginning, I, I hope that the board will look at, is what group of youngsters were the, had the highest rate, and it is our economically disadvantaged children. So the ones that, that really, in many cases, are the most vulnerable do have the higher rate. And so that's something that we've got to continue to look at. Secondly, New Mexico does have a long history of poor attendance. And so that's something we've got to continue to work on. There aren't many penalties for it in our state, and I want to get into the, the pros and cons of whether you should or should have, not have stronger penalties, but we really don't have too many. And so that's a factor for us as well. You may have seen a couple of years ago, the big push from the, uh, the, the United Way and, and the School Boards Association and the Administrators Association, the Everyday Matters, trying to get people to pay attention, to get their, their children to school every day. But it is, it's been a challenge in New Mexico. The other last thing I want to just point out is, as we look at those numbers comparing back to eighteen nineteen to this year, the one factor that also has to be considered in that is nine hundred kids are gone. And they're probably our kids with the worst, in most cases, the worst attendance. So that has skewed those numbers. So when we've lost nine hundred students, comparing the eighteen nineteen to now, you do have to take into effect that nine hundred kids are pulled out of that, and that does skew the data somewhat.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Another, another piece of this is as we move into MLSS, the Multi-Layered Systems of Support, next year, attendance is a huge part of that layer one, and so we'll be focusing on it. We'll continue to focus on it. Our successes are our positive behavior supports on all of our campuses, and that's been a huge push from Tana's department for years. Public celebrations for attendance have been very successful with incentives and those relationships with the kids. There's nothing that will get kids to school more than building those relationships. And our next steps are pretty similar. And then we'll pass it over to Renee for secondary.
I want to add one thing, Renee, and I'll be quiet. I wanted to share, on the, the chart that you showed, we actually got just a couple of days ago, an update on that nine hundred, and how many have we not found? And we were down now to eleven. And so as soon as I gave Tana the eleven, she was on it. So now I think we're down to maybe five or six. And we'll be meeting with Graduation Alliance next week. But the, the comment was from nine hundred to eleven was phenomenal. And so that goes to the staff here, Tana at her office, particularly the principals of the school and their staff, were really trying to find these kids. And so, but anyway, the, the last figure we had was, was eleven, and they gave us their names, and they gave us their grade levels, they gave us all of that. So Boy Student Services was on it, and I think Tana's resolved half of those. So we may be down to maybe five kids that we have not been able to make contact with and, and, and account for. So that's just a brief update on, you know, to show how hard people have worked on this issue. Renee, I'm turning it back to you.
Thank you. And I don't know, President Galbraith, if you would want to do questions on attendance now, because this is going to be really different because it's just failure rates. So it might be, I don't know, it might be a good time for questions for attendance. We might should have put a, a questions slide in here.
That was going to be my suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
No, that's a great idea. We'll go with Wynne Coleman, so she's, she's ready to go. Go ahead, Wynne.
Not so much a question, but I, I just really want to point out that when the Behavioral Health Advisory Committee presented, there was a commitment, and it's not something that can be represented at this point in this, this presentation, but to really kind of doing an assessment, each school and even kind of district-wide, the programs to support the mental health of our students. So I just, I, I think that it's important to just also know that, and make note that the district also has that in place to really be aware of and, and to support the students. And that's all I had to, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Wynne. Noreen Scott, do you have any questions or comments for, from everything so far?
I would just like to say thank you for a very thorough report. It was very understandable. And I thank you so much for all the energy and effort that you have put into attendance, because that is the unique problem, as Dr. Cleveland talked about. You, you can't, you can't teach someone who isn't there. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Catherine Cullen, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So I had a, a couple of questions, and I'm going back to the slide. I apologize. So there was a, a difference because eighteen nineteen is when they were fully remote. In nineteen twenty, they, I mean, I mean, fully in person. And then nineteen twenty, they did a portion towards the end of this whole year as remote. But why is it, it seems like nineteen twenty, the rates, the chronic absentee rate was a bit lower? Than say eighteen.
Yeah, I don't, they weren't as strict, if, if students, it was all about remediating stu-, remediating students. It wasn't about attendance at Google meets. And so it was a lot more lax with how attendance was reported. You know, if they made contact with the kid, and I don't know if you recall, but we had them just check a box if they went in to say that they were there. We didn't actually have to see them. So as long as they checked that box, we counted it as attendance. And so I think that's why some of the data is skewed, at least that's my perception from it. But we never got a clear answer as to why the numbers were so low.
Yeah, because that's, that was only the last quarter that we went fully remote of that year. So, and, so I don't know if that, I can't imagine that we were so far down in some of those areas just for that last quarter. We do do that last quarter, maybe. I mean, I don't know what the data is. You'd have to look at the whole year and see when it did that. The other thing is, is I did see on, so we did talk about the economically disadvantaged, but also the students with disabilities, would, they're at twenty-eight percent. Twenty-nine percent for the economically disadvantaged, and ELL is at thirty-six point one five percent. So those are the ones that we really, you know, need to, since we, we are seeing such a high rate. That's really concerning because those are the ones that, you know, that do definitely need the extra help already. And then we're at a pretty high number because that ELL is at, yeah, thirty-six percent. That's pretty high.
Just two quick comments about that. And, and to your point, and I think you make a really good point, the data is, is not as clean as it needs to be, period. And so you could take trend data from this, but to that exact, I think would be a real fallacy to do. The other, some of these children are duplicated counts. So you may have children who are economically disadvantaged and ELL. And you may have a child who is ELL and also special ed. And so, you know, I, the, the data is important, and it does give us really good information. But, you know, it, it isn't completely clean, and I would want you all to, to be sure that you were aware of that. Another thing that I think is interesting in that, that I looked at, and again, it's not completely clean, but where you had K three, where they were in person. You, you had, you certainly had a, a better situation where, as opposed to when we were remote with other grade levels, you could see the trend data, very significant difference between the early elementary and the secondary. And of course, as you, I'm sure recall, we were in person for K three since September. So you would expect there to be some difference, but it certainly affirms that the remote isn't for everyone. It doesn't work well for, for everyone. But please be very careful with the data because it's, it's not as clean as we would like it to be, but it's what we have.
All right. Thank you.
And then Jeffrey Morgan, do you have any questions or comments to this point?
No questions, but again, just a comment. Thanks for all the work. I really appreciate the information.
Thank you. Now, I too, I was surprised that, that it wasn't big, that big of a change. I was like, what? And it makes more sense, you know, as I listened to Dr. Cleveland talk about those nine hundred students. But yeah, I had that same as I was looking at it for the meeting, just like, wow, that's not that far different. And it is still surprising, even, even knowing those, those kids that we don't have. So, but I too, just thank you for all that you've guys have done with, with, with this absence. And it's been, it's been really hard to try to track. As a parent, it's been hard to track like my own children. So it's been, it's been hard with that. So, okay, we'll go ahead and let you continue on.
All righty, secondary failure rates. Jane, if you could click on that for me, please. So I've shared my spreadsheets with you all, and the raw data is on the tabs, the numbers of Fs and total students, in case you want to play with numbers. You know, this, this is one of those things where I found myself going down a rabbit hole because you just, I don't know, I, I enjoy working with numbers anyway. And so I just found myself, well, maybe I should compare it to this, or this, or that. So I, I did, the raw data is there for you if anybody wants to look at it on the second tab especially. So the way these are calculated, it's the number of Fs. So the number of courses that a student failed. So there could, one student could fail six courses, six students could fail one course. It's going to look the same, okay? I know that Carl presented some numbers at one point, and he presented number of students with one or more Fs. So that's, that's really different data. You know, I'm, you could probably find something similar, but it, that if there's percentages that are different, that's why. So I have this broken down. The first chart is for this school year. And the first column is semester one, the third column is quarter three. So really, this started when we wanted to see if those changes that we made in December or January made a difference. So I compared semester one with quarter three grades. I was disappointed to see the, that there wasn't a, um, a bigger difference in the number of Fs. So if the number of Fs have gone down, it's in red so that you can see that's, it's moved in the right direction. I think that some of this is because it's quarter three instead of a final grade. You know, a lot of times, kids will put in that extra effort at the end to make sure that they pass a course. So there wasn't as big of a difference as I would have hoped that we saw. When I saw that, I thought, well, I would like to compare semester one to quarter three in other years. The first one that I did was nineteen twenty, and then I wanted to see if that quarter three grade really did move up at semester two. Well, after I had done the numbers, then I realized, oh, well, last year is the year that we allowed all of that change. So I thought, okay, I'm going to do eighteen nineteen. So that's why it's these three years. See the rabbit hole that I fell into? And so it's actually kind of an interesting comparison because you have this year, which was crazy, last year, which there were a quarter of craziness, and then the year before, which is our, used to be normal. What I found interesting is that from quarter three to semester two, it always, the number of Fs lowers. You, that's pretty consistent. Seniors have the highest numbers because they have the highest at stake, so they're going to make sure to, to pass those classes. I guess ultimately, to your question, it does, there's a small improvement from semester one to quarter three with those changes. But I also think that we went through so many changes. It's hard to say whether they made a difference or not, because then we went in person and then, and then, and then things kept changing. So here's the data. What I, I think is, yes, Wynne.
Yeah, as I looked at this, I, I do have a question. I wanted to get what insight you have. When I look at semester two for last year, and knowing what we had to do to just get the students through the year, there wasn't a real big improvement on their failure rate. And I know that we really worked to accommodate. Why do you think that that is? Because it looked like there wasn't a lot of change from eighteen nineteen.
From, do you mean from quarter three to semester two?
Yes, and if I look like even the year before, you know, I would have thought that the numbers would have increased, improved for semester two of last year, because that's when we had quarter three, quarter four, and we were.
What I think happened, and if you see me looking, I just have it pulled up on my other screen so that I can see it. What I think happened is we really ended up going with quarter three grades because we were doing remediation. we really ended up going with quarter three grades because we were doing remediation. We were doing, can you improve quarter three? So I, I don't know that I would have expected a huge change because at quarter, it was basically right at the end of quarter three that we were, no, we, we were let out of school. So I think that basically you kept that quarter three grade, except for the kids that wanted to improve. And, and probably, you know, this is just my gut feeling that the um kids that were failing didn't necessarily um put the effort in to improve that grade at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Um so uh that's basically my breakdown of the numbers. Jane, if you could go back to the uh PowerPoint unless, you know, if anybody has questions on how I did this, if you want to ask now, I'm fine with that. I think you're good, yeah.
I do, I, I do. Um I, I do have a couple of questions about the numbers. Um when it comes to the, the numbers, uh, were you able to, Renee, do any kind of breakdown or assessment? Like, I'm wondering how many um that we're seeing from this year that ha- were failing in the first half? Would be a representation? Are they the same students in the second? Uh the second half of the year? I, I don't know if you, I, as you said, you know, there's a rabbit hole to kinda go down, I'm sure.
Right. This is just courses in general. So I didn't have students attached to it at all.
Okay.
Um the numbers that are underneath the charts are, for example, I took um the number of sixth graders and multiplied that times six to get for my denominator because they take six courses. So it's not attached to kids at all. It's just number of Fs.
Okay. And, and I can't remember on the other tabs, but um was there any? So I guess with that, then probably what we don't know is um with the failure rate, wh- what are um students with um special needs um?
Yeah, I don't have any breakdown like that.
ELL, okay. Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm, thank you. So um with that being said, I'd like to, you know, we've talked about opportunities that we're offering to seniors in particular. Um so I would like to talk about that again because I know that's kind of at the um everybody's thinking about their senior and getting them graduated. Uh remind us that the alternative demonstration of competencies were basically removed for all seniors. So every student was able to take advantage of that. Um credit in, when you graduate, you either have to have an AP course, a dual credit course or distance learning. Every student who was in high school this year will have that taken care of. They won't have to take an additional course. So I put all seniors there, but in reality, it's every high school student. Um to let you know um the, the different things that you approved and how students have been using them, you allowed us to offer a waiver from Rio Rancho's twenty six credits down to twenty four. At this point in time, eighty five seniors have taken advantage of that. I think it's also important to know that thirty four of those seniors still earned twenty six or more credits. They just weren't in the right classes. So maybe they didn't have a tech credit and so we needed to waive that, but they still had their twenty six credits. Or maybe the fourth science, which isn't uh a New Mexico requirement, but a Rio Rancho requirement. Fifty one of those students will be graduating with either twenty five, four or twenty five credits. Of course, in the, in the courses that were needed for um the state of New Mexico. Uh next slide, Jane? Nope, there you go. Uh algebra two waivers, fifty exemptions, fifty nine seniors took advantage of that. Just as a reminder, they did still have to have four math credits. Um they just didn't have to have algebra two. A lot of the students, as I was kind of gathering all of this information and looking through the waivers, a lot of them had one semester of it, but they may have had a C or D. And so their second semester, they took advantage of this waiver and took a different math. Um we've had two hundred and five seniors take advantage of that um Edgenuity Boot Camp for Credit Recovery. And then uh we have waived the course fees for credit recovery and seventy seven seniors have been able to take advantage of that. A couple of other things, um usually students are gra- are twenty twenty one graduates. Their normal deadline would have been June thirtieth. The state has extended that to July thirty first. So if there's a senior out there who is not um they're not gonna finish their courses for, to be able to walk in graduation, they do still have until July thirty first to get that done. We decided this morning, and I think everybody's really excited about it, summer school for every ninth through twelfth grader, the fee will be waived. So please, 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 families, take advantage if you have a student who needs credit recovery. We're um, information will be going out. Instead of offering the normal two sessions, we're gonna offer four sessions. A morning and an afternoon session. We usually offer um, I wanna say they're three weeks in the morning, but now we're gonna do three weeks in the morning, three weeks in the afternoon, and we'll do two of those. So students, if they took full advantage of this, could earn two full credits. And um we'll save, that would be four classes, eight hundred dollars. So we really hope that people take advantage of this, and that is not just for seniors, it's for ninth through twelfth. So um the other thing that the comprehensive high schools are doing, May seventh is the last day for seniors and they graduate the seventh, or, you know, there's that weekend in there, everybody is graduating. For students who have not successfully completed a course at that point, they won't be able to walk, but they'll continue to come to school and until, so they'll come to school between May ninth and June third. They'll attend those classes with the teachers and have opportunities to complete work, to make up work, to do whatever they need to do so that we can give them a grade change and make sure that they gain that credit. Now, if they don't complete the class by June third, then we would expect them to go into the um summer school. So those are the, hopefully, we're providing opportunities um for kids and and I hope that, that people take advantage of it. And with that, I believe I am finished and ready for questions.
Okay, thank you, Renee. Thank you for all that work on that. And let's go with Jeffrey Morgan. Do you have any questions, comments?
You know, let me let some of the other board members go first. I do have a couple of questions, but I wanna see what the other.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, sounds good. And how about Noreen Scott?
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. Um no, uh I, I guess uh my, my concern is at this point, what is the total number of seniors in jeopardy of graduating right now?
I would have to get that number for you. I can uh try to get it and then have it in Dr. Cleveland's report.
Okay.
Um a- and I will warn you, seniors, you know, it's funny, at this point in time, they still have two weeks and it's amazing the, what they can pull out in two weeks. But I can definitely, I'll ask all of the schools um how many seniors they have in jeopardy right now.
Thank you, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. I really applaud the efforts you've made uh around uh summer school. I, I think that is a wonderful gift to, to students and uh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Secretary Scott. And Catherine Cullen?
Thanks. And Renee, thank you so much for this report. And um actually, that was my question after reading this report before coming into this meeting was about summer school. That was what, one of my notes that I had taken. And then I got the superintendent's report, so I was really happy to see that in there. Um because I think that was a concern for some of us is, you know, we've talked about the fees and we really need to get these students caught up. Um but, and I see that, that the ninth, tenth, and the eleventh grade, you know, we're seeing pretty high, some pretty high numbers, the percentages is there. And I think that that we're gonna have to see about them taking the um summer school to try to catch them up on some of those classes as well. And I'm, I'm assuming we'll do a summer graduation again?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the screen cuz I don't see anybody except for Jeff Morgan's uh Well, I really appreciate the the summer school. That was my major concern um coming into this meeting when I was seeing these numbers. And you guys already took care of that, answered that question that I, I was gonna come into with this meeting. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And um I'll go over to Win Coleman and then we'll go back over to Jeffrey Morgan after that.
Thank you. And, and thank you both, Jenna and Renee, for the presentation. You know, I'm wondering it, when um everything wraps up from this year and we're looking at just the um students that, I'm, I'm thinking secondary, where they um they put themselves in a position where they can't retake a class. Um and then that would be, uh, that would have been when students um look at enrolling at Independence. And so how are we as the district going to handle what? Um to be proactive, because I'd like to say that the numbers will decrease and we'll be in a better position, but um I, I also wanna know that we're, we're proactive in that, how are we gonna handle those circumstances?
This is um a topic that we've been talking about. I meet with the high school principals, all four high schools, the principals every Friday morning. And this is something that's constantly on our radar. What we've been talking about is really, you know, this is one of those cases where we don't really know where we're gonna be until June, you know, the end of June to, until we actually get those numbers. And um trying to you know, what we really need to take is into consideration because if you have failed English nine, we've always moved you into English ten. And so to really kind of, depending on those numbers, look at, at how we're scheduling. Um look at other opportunities for credit recovery. Um like you said, kids of, if they're in that situation, um they're, they're behind. And so we're gonna have to find a way to catch them up. Um so it's constantly on our radar. I think once we get a firm number, we'll be able to, the group will be able to come up with a plan.
I, I do wanna express, um having a, a child that graduated from Independence, um knowing that if her, if the option that she had was going virtual, um I, I would say that I don't know if she would have finished. And so I'm really hope, you know, my concern is that when, you know, because that's an alternative program. Um and students are already dealing with kind of these struggles that, that we're not, I, I would say, just to request that we don't look at um saying, your only option is virtual, that we really take seriously how we can improve and make sure that, that we're doing what's, what's best and really identifying. I think the thing is, is that, you know, for one reason or another, they weren't successful. And, you know, if the virtual situation was one of the reasons, I, I just am concerned about that. And I know that this is hard. So um but I just, um I wanna say that for both of you, but I've, I've interacted maybe a little bit more, Renee, with you. And I just appreciate your, I, I think from both of you, just your ongoing commitment to doing uh what, what you can and to have the students really uh just at heart, um what is in their best interest. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And to speak to that, I mean, one of the ideas that we've kind of talked about, it's just not a a, you know, firm plan, but one of the ideas that we've talked about is like an eighth period. You know, regardless of what high school you're at, and it would be at your home school for credit recovery. So I think that takes care of, of your concern, Win, uh Board Member Coleman, with, sorry, with um, you know, making sure that you still have uh in-person with a teacher classes. You know, but we are looking at different options. But I hear what you're saying and I agree with you.
Okay, thank you for addressing that concern.
Thank you. And then Jeffrey Morgan, do you wanna add?
Yes, uh, I wanna piggyback on the question that Noreen had asked uh about the, uh, some of the students that's on the bubble that may not make it. Uh the, the, the backside of the question I wanna ask is, is I guess what I wanna know is, let's say you've got some students that are on the bubble and they get discouraged and decide, you know what, forget it, I'm just gonna move on. Uh is there a program to kinda, and I don't mean this in a negative way, hunt these kids down to say, hey, I know you're discouraged, I, I know you just don't think you can make it, but hey, if you just hit these classes over the summer, you can graduate, you can do it. I, I'm just wondering, is there a program to, to really get after these kids that may decide that's on the bubble that forget it, I'm done with it, I don't need this, but we can kinda encourage them to go back and finish up cuz they're just maybe one or two classes away. That's my concern right now. And do we have something in place that would encourage the kids to finish?
I think that that's a, a really good question and a great point. I cannot give enough kudos, whatever, to our counselors. They, they call those students and especially the senior counselors, they know exactly how many credits the kids need, you know, what their grade is. They're constantly talking to me about, do you think it's time that I put in this waiver? I think he can do it. So they, they really continue those conversations with the students um even, even into the summer, you know. Um I just can't, I can't tell you how much time the counselors put in and especially those senior counselors with trying to get the, the, those kids graduated.
Okay, all right. And the, the other question I have, do, do we have results showing the number of students just graduating is going on to college? Do we have that information?
Um, I don't know. I know that sometime, you know, a lot of times um the counselors will know just because they're told. I would have to find that information out.
Well, I, I would think by now, I mean, some of the students will be sending transcripts out to various universities and they have to go through the school to get that information, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they go through, there's a third party that you ask for the transcripts. Um I, let me find out about that.
Yeah, that's called parchment.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thanks for your work. I really appreciate the information. Very good job, very good job.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back up to Win and then.
And, and Jeff, um Vice President Morgan made me think about, I, I know that we've got, you know, as he was talking about the students that have just decided to call it quits. Um with, if those are seniors, for example, um the, the program that, that we've been taking advantage of, where they're kind of getting in touch with the the students that we haven't been able to locate or haven't shown up, and how long are we going to be working with, with them?
Um we'll continue that relationship as long as they exist. Uh they've always had a graduation alliance that, the Engage New Mexico is a a little newer. Dr. Cleveland, I don't know if you know if they continue, if they plan on continuing their efforts?
Well, actually, I, I know they are and Todd and I are meeting with them Tuesday. Um but again, we're only down to six students, but we don't know where they are. So we know where our kids are now. I, I think though, um there's a, a couple of, of, yes, we are gonna continue and Graduation Alliance is going to continue and continue to provide support. So we'll continue to have that support. And to your point, um uh Mr. Morgan, uh they too will help our counselors. Uh reach out to the families and encourage the kids to come back. And sometimes it um you know, having someone outside of your school just like talk to parents is helpful too. And so they sit down and say, here's some options and really encourage those students to go back. But they also talk about if they're absolutely not going to go back, for them to look at the GED options uh and some of the support through CNN. But that's not what they encourage. They encourage them to come back and finish at their high school, explain to them why that's a, a far better option. So uh we continue. And I so much agree with what Renee has said. Our counselors are, they are the most dedicated folks to trying to get these students to come back and finish. And many of our students have personal relationships with them that really do help. And so but Graduation Alliance will also be there, and they will also reach out if we want them to to do so to encourage those students to to come back and finish. And I I think that the decision to not charge is going to be a huge factor for some families. And they're not going to pay that. They don't have that to pay. They maybe have been out of work or they've had other things. So and some that thought, I'm just checking it off, we're hoping that they will reevaluate that now because their student can come back and can finish. And if cost was the factor, that should no longer, no longer matter. So the key is getting that information out and and Beth and her team is masterful with that. So we're certainly going to get information out on all these new options and I encourage people to to contact us back. I had a couple of other things, but I'll send it back to you, President Galbraith, to continue if there are other questions from the board, but I do have a few things.
Okay, okay, we'll come right back to you in just a moment. Lynn, did you have anything else before I go over to Catherine?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Board Member Catherine Cullen?
Yes, actually, I just, I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to say with Vice President Morgan's question and what I've seen with the district over the years, they're just absolutely amazing, both the counselors, but also the district office of getting those students that might be thinking about dropping out. I mean, they just take it very personally on every student and really try to engage with them to stay within school. I mean, I've always been very impressed with that with our with our district at how well that they try to work with our students to to stay in school and to get that diploma. So I just wanted to say yeah, it's not just the counselors, but the counselors do have a fantastic job, but it's really a team effort from all of them. So thank you.
Noreen Scott, did you have something? I just saw you're unmuted.
Yes, yes, I did. I have a couple of questions. Do we track graduation onto college rates year year over year?
We do, and I don't know exactly how that is done, but I see those figures every year. I know we have the next step plans, and we know what students are indicating they're going to do. But we get that, and I I agree, Renee, I think we just need to go back and see where it is. I, but yes, we do. We do track that.
Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. And then I'll go to Dr. Cleveland in just a second. You know, I just, you know, as we talk about all these things, I just, I feel like it's so important. So Renee talks about going into the rabbit hole. That doesn't happen with me when it comes to numbers. As I looked at your slide today, I was like, I'm just going to wait till the meeting and see what she explains. But, you know, as I have talked to students in our district and just different things, what I noticed, and so this is no raw data other than me just, you know, talking to different individuals, is the importance of being in person and how so many of their grades were falling, and it wasn't until kind of the fear of seeing their parent, their teacher face to face and being around other students that they were like, I can't tell you how many kids are like, I'm terrified to go into Spanish. I don't know if I've learned anything. And then they recognize it's them. It's not really necessarily their teachers. But I think, you know, we we as a board and as a district and as a community, we really, really need to just keep talking to our legislators and sending those messages to the governor and everything with all these vaccines that are happening, which are so positive. And asking that, you know, some of the different things be taken off of us, you know, that we can keep those schools open. We really need them to be open, and I think that's where we'll see the greatest improvement is when our students can go to school and be there. So anyway, with that, I'll go over to Dr. Cleveland and let her go ahead and finish.
And I would like to say one thing that reminded me. You know, I talked about the seniors coming between May ninth and June third. That will be in person. Like, we're not going to offer that virtually for those exact reasons that you're talking about. We really want them in person to to try to help them through to the end of the courses.
I think that's what is so good. They just love being in person when, you know, my my daughter couldn't go for a while because she had a case in one of her classes, and it was devastating. It was just devastating because she, it was so good for her to be back in school. So, okay, Dr. Cleveland? You're muted, Dr. Cleveland. I didn't think I'd have to say that this meeting, but.
Orin's whatever. Just a couple of of comments. It's, you know, once we get better numbers, as Renee said, we'll shift now to whatever it is we need to do to try to accommodate those students. Independence is that capacity. There's only so much room in that building. You can't stuff the building full and not take away the effectiveness of the program. But you might be able to look at double shifts, or there might be some other things that that we could do. So once we have an idea of looking at those numbers, then we'll make those accommodations based on those numbers. I think one of the things we're going to have a lot of difficulty doing next year is until we know what the numbers look like at all grade levels, our numbers per grade level could shift. And so, you know, do we have, I'll just pick a grade, do we have 1.25% increased space for fourth grade? Well, no, we don't. And so it's the the whole idea of, you know, how we're going to manage those shifts in numbers is going to be very problematic. And so that's something we're going to have to to look at. I think one of the other things that you know, in all the conversation, we are going to do everything we can possibly do to help our kids get through. And you can see people have looked at every possible thing that they can do. And so we hope that that folks will step up and those that are discouraged will come back and give it another shot. But I do want to say one thing, we don't do students any favors by moving them on when they don't have the knowledge of skills. That's not the right answer. And so the right answer is to give them the support and make sure they get through. And we've got some folks that we've talked to that just kind of want to, okay, now let's just move everybody through. That's that's not good for the students. And so the alternative to that is just give them as much support and give them every opportunity so that when they graduate, that diploma means something to them. But it not only means something to them, it means something to the employers in the school, in this community, or to higher education. One of the things that one of the former presidents at UNM said to me, which I thought was kind of a shocking thing, was I can almost tell where a student graduated from based on how successful they are in the first year of of college at our institution. So we want to maintain that high level of expectation, but at the same time acknowledging what our students and families have been through and knowing it hasn't been a normal year and knowing that they need extra help and support. So the goal is the extra support. And then the goal is making sure that diploma continues to mean something to the student as well as to to the colleges, universities, and our employers. Because we want people to continue sack and tell the difference of Rio Rancho Public School graduate. And, you know, that that diploma actually means something. And then, you know, as I mentioned, we will look at everything. Once we get those numbers, what kinds of shifts? We will continue to work with Graduation Alliance and Engage New Mexico. And, you know, we have found some really sad stories with some of our families. We talked to one guy who has cancer, the family has been through a really tough time, and and he just said to me, the children just kind of slipped through the cracks because we've not been able to do. I said, just reach out to us, we'll help you, you know, just give us a chance to come in and be supportive. So I want to thank our counselors. I want to thank our teachers. I want to thank everybody. As to Catherine's point, it's been a team effort, and everybody stepped up to make it work, including food service, who got food to homes and all of those kinds of kinds of things. So again, it's, the last thing I guess I would say is to our students, please, please adhere to the public health order. One of our high schools in the South did not do that, and they went ahead with a secret prom. And now that whole school has been moved back to virtual and will be there for a while. And so we don't want that, and that would make it very hard for us to deliver some of these things that we services that we're promising. So we're going to continue to hope that our community will will allow us to stay in person, learning as much as possible and appreciate all those families who've been helpful and supportive through this really difficult time. And the one last thing that I'll require the families, and I will say, we thank those families who stepped up and helped this year in so many different ways. And not only sometimes their own children, but sometimes other people's children as well. So anyway, that's all that I have to say. But I, it is going to be interesting. What if you don't get all those seniors through, where do they go next year, you know, and where do we find room for them? And how do we, how do we accommodate the staffing for this really uncertain number? So the goal has just got to be, we've got to work our hearts out, which everyone will do, get these kids through. And that's what we intend to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for all of that. And thank you for all the hard work from both Renee and Jana and everyone on their teams who helped hold all this together. We've been anxious to hear these reports, and so we appreciate them being presented today. So thank you again. Anything else from the board or also Renee and Jana, if you have anything else before we move on to our next portion? Hey, thank you so much. Okay, we will now move into business. And the first item A is a report. The Board of Education met in a closed executive session on April 19th, 2021, under sections 10-15-1-H2 and 10- or no, this is the second one, okay. And then 10-15-1-H7 and 10-15-1-H8 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. I'm hoping I'm reading those correctly. To discuss pending litigation with legal counsel, the purchase of, the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property by the public body and limited personnel matters. The matters discussed in the closed meeting were limited only to those specified in the notice of the special closed meeting. Item B, to consider the approval of the four 12/20/21 unapproved board meeting minutes. Were there any changes that needed to take place on those minutes? Have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
This is Catherine Cullen, I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Noreen Scott and a second by Catherine Cullen. Kim, can you take a roll call vote for us?
Yes, ma'am. I'm unmuted, right? Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Our next is to consider the approval of state-funded bilingual multicultural education program grant applications. And we have Suzanne Nguyen, our Executive Director of Federal Bilingual and Native American Programs, here to discuss.
Good afternoon, Madam President Galbraith, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I am respectfully bringing to you today consideration for approval, continuing program applications for five of our schools who currently run state-funded Spanish bilingual multicultural education programs. And these fall under the BME Act of 2004. And the two statutory goals for our programs are for students to become bilingual and biliterate in English and Spanish and to meet the state academic content standards and benchmarks in all content areas. So again, these five schools currently run a program, and our submission of applications is to continue the programs for next school year. We have Maggie Cordova Elementary, who runs a K2 program through a dual language model, grades three through five, through a heritage program model. Questa Del Sol runs K through four dual language, fifth grade heritage. Eagle Ridge, Sue Cleveland High School, Andrea Rancho High all run both enrichment and heritage program models. And I would like to note that I know that the district signature page that I submitted does have a deadline date of April 20th. And I want to point out that the PED is well aware of misalignment sometimes with application deadlines when looking at public meeting dates. So I know that date has passed. However, please don't let that deter you or sway your decision in any way. We are fine with the flexibilities around that feat. I am happy to answer any questions if there are any.
First off, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you always put through with all of these things. Like, so much appreciated for everything you do for these programs. And then, Board, do you have any questions or comments? I'll just no? Oh, go ahead, Win.
This is not, well, with everything as we're wrapping up with the year, I do, and I appreciate everything Suzanne that you do in a group of students that we might not always have the privilege to kind of get to know. And so I'm just asking that as we wrap up things for the year, that if there are programs and things like that virtually even that if you would include us so we can support. So that's all.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be great to to know about the programs that are happening.
Absolutely. May I speak to an upcoming multicultural event that we do have May 12? So we do have a whole series of many family engagement events that we've had running throughout the year for for our multiple programs. I will be very intentional about getting that information over to you. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Any other board members? Catherine, do you have anything? Noreen Scott, okay. Or Jeffrey Morgan, anything else? I think I see, Noreen, go ahead.
I was just going to move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
This is Board Member Coleman, I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Noreen Scott and a second by Win Coleman. Kim, can you take a roll call vote for us?
Yes, ma'am. Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so for our next item, make sure I'm in the right spot, is to consider the consideration of the award of ITB number 2021-007-FAC-HVAC Filter Replacement, and Michael Madrid, our Purchasing Director, and Melanie Archibek, our Executive Director of Facilities, are here to present.
Thank you, Board President Galbraith, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Cleveland. Purchasing initiated the referenced ITB to establish a price agreement for filter replacements throughout the district. The ITB is a little bit different as far as the requirements for the procurement methods that have been presented to the board recently. We have been using what's called an RFP, a Request for Proposal. The differences between the two procurement methods is the ITB, the typical award is made to the lowest responsive bidder. In addition to that, the content of the bids on the ITB side are made public almost immediately. So if proposals are due at two o'clock, as close to two o'clock, we conduct a public reading of the bid responses. We disclose the pricing. We disclose the various affidavits. We acknowledge compliance and things like that. And the information is made available to the public immediately. The RFP process is based off of qualifications, pricing being a part of that evaluation process, but it's not the sole criteria for recommending an award. And the other big distinction is on the RFP, the content of any proposal is not made public as to not impact negatively the negotiation of the contract. Statute is very clear, and it actually says that specifically, that the content's not to be disclosed as to not impede the negotiation process of the contract. So with that being said, the district received four responses to this bid solicitation. Responses were received from Advanced Environmental. They're at Lubbock, Texas. We received a response from BND Industries out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. JB Henderson Construction, they have actually two offices, one in Albuquerque, and they do have a presence here in Rio Rancho. And Wiser Electric out of Rio Rancho. The lowest pricing that we received was from Advanced Environmental. So part of the responsiveness requirement, Chris Greeno, our Maintenance Director for Facilities and myself, we contacted Tanner Carey with Advanced Environmental. And we wanted to verify that his pricing that he referenced was accurate in his bid response. Mr. Carey indicated that, in fact, the pricing is correct. And as documentation, I asked him to provide written correspondence indicating that that was the issue. So as far as the pricing, we vetted it three times. We vetted it within their bid. We vetted it through a telephone communication, and we also have additional written documentation. In addition to the pricing, we also looked at their past performance and their ability to to fulfill the obligations and the scope of work of this procurement. Advanced Environmental has roughly 50 government entities, which includes school districts, hospitals, universities throughout Texas and New Mexico. They replace, on average, 25,000 filters monthly. They're very familiar with the various filtration systems. And most recently, they also completed the filter replacements for Rio Rancho Public Schools. The filter replacement was done on a timely basis, and the pricing is consistent to the pricing that they identified in their bid response. The recommendation, as initially indicated, is for the lowest responsive bidder, Advanced Environmental IAQ.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Any questions, Noreen, Scott?
Yes, I'd like to weigh in on it. Must we take the lowest bid? Or can we go to a local vendor? Because those vendors support our community, and therefore it's incumbent upon us where we can to support them.
Board Member Scott, with the ITB, we don't have that flexibility. And even with the RFP format, the only preference or the only ability that we have is what's called a New Mexico resident preference, and they only get five points for that. It would be prohibitive for a government entity to initiate a request for award based on a local presence to that area.
So my question is, even with the 5% preference, our local bidders did not come within what you needed?
That is correct, ma'am.
So they were more than 5% more than the company out of Lubbock?
Yes, ma'am.
My challenge is, I strongly feel that the school district has an obligation to support the local business community. We go to them and ask them for donations and support throughout the year, and they support us in bond issues, and they support us in a variety of ways. So I just want to go on record that I think it's wrong.
I appreciate that comment. The real intent of all the procurement is trying to make the solicitation process fair and equitable to all the players, so everybody has the same opportunity to be successful. And I do hear your comments, Board Member Scott, and at least based on the current statutes. The only opportunity that we have to afford any additional preferences is that New Mexico resident preference, and it's only five points, or 5%.
Go ahead, Jeffrey.
Real quick, maybe you can't do this, and I know this may be an integrity issue, but to Noreen's point, I don't, I mean, I'm in sales, and a lot of times, when my competitor has a price advantage over my brands, I tend to go back to my boss and say, hey, man, Liquor Store A is going to pay this amount of money for this brand, but I like to be competitive. I guess where I'm going with this is, do you ever let the local businesses know that, hey, man, you're being beat by X amount of dollars? So, hey, man, if you could get your price down to this, then we'll consider you. I mean, is there a negotiation game that goes on to that, to that point with what we're looking at here? Because I understand what Noreen is saying, and it makes a lot of sense. But do we go back and forth and negotiate with these guys and say, hey, man, you're off here? If you could just be here, I think we'd be okay.
Board Member Morgan, if this would have been a procurement that we have initiated in the past, all that pricing information would become public record, and people could come in and at least view what the pricing was at the time that it was solicited. We need to consider ourselves in a position of, I guess, defending a protest. So what would happen if somebody came back to the district indicating that they had the best price, they were able to perform the services, and still the district went with somebody else? That would be a difficult challenge to defend that protest. I don't really see the district being in a position to defend something like that. So we have to be fair and upfront and equitable, making sure that everybody has the same opportunity to be competitive.
If I may add here, hi, this is Melanie Archibek, Executive Director of Facilities. Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, that's also considered price shopping, and we are not allowed to do that.
Okay.
That is correct. There's actually a statute on the construction side, there's actually a subcontractor Fair Practices Act that really spells out exactly what Melanie's talking about, that would put the district in a position of liability if we were aware of that and were to take action. And it puts the contractor in a position of liability as well.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, in my line of work, I mean, we have the flexibility of doing that. I was just curious if it worked in that arena as well. So you could, I'm not going to ask you to go against any policies or procedures. I was just curious.
Yeah, hold on one second, Noreen. So thank you, and thanks for those questions. And I'll go to Noreen and Nguyen here in just a second, but thank you for explaining those, you know? It's always helpful, especially as we have, you know, we've been in a year, but it hasn't been that long, and so I appreciate the explanation as we kind of go into those things. Go ahead, Noreen.
Well, I know from a contracting perspective, we do not have to go with the lowest bidder. We can base ourselves on prior experience and delivery, and I heard you mention that in the discussion. But I'd just like to interject that we do not have to go with the lowest bidder, at least that's based on my experience in state contracting.
Board Member Scott, if I can just kind of give some clarification. So I agree with what you're saying, we don't go. But if they're deemed responsive and they meet the requirements, then by the ITB model, we have to go with that vendor. The only time that we would not go with that vendor, say that we found an error in the pricing, we found an error as far as their compliance to the scope of work, things like that, then we can actually reject them as being non-responsive. But if they're deemed responsive, they met the requirements, and they're the low price, we should make the award to that vendor.
Maybe we should, but I feel an obligation to the community that supports us. And you've heard me at every single school board meeting, so it's not a surprise that I have this stance. So I'm just letting you know where I stand, and I feel very strongly that this is wrong.
Thank you, Secretary Scott. Nguyen Coleman? And then I'll go over to Dr. Cleveland. Go ahead, Nguyen.
Yes, I am going to ask. Now, there are just things by statute that we have to follow. And so I think what would be helpful is even if there was maybe some communication sent out that had the statutes that we could reference, because we do, there are things by law that we have to abide by. And so I'm asking that, if we can put those together and then send those out, it's kind of a refresher for the board.
Board Member Coleman, what I could do, if it's okay with the board, is part of the superintendent's report that I forward to Beth for distribution of the board, like on the RFPs, where we provide you guys some information, we can cross-reference the reference to the statute. I mean, I think that's a good idea. I think the more that everybody understands the complexity of procurement and the restrictiveness and just how our processes are dictated by statute, I think that benefits everybody. And also, if anybody wants to reach out and just conduct a one-on-one discussion.
But I would, if I may, just really ask that, if you could, I don't want to put more work in, but I think that, you know, I know that this has been a discussion we've had before, and just having that as just kind of a note to reference, because I know when you're dealing with districts and contracts, and that we are really watched very closely and have to follow strict guidelines.
I totally agree, Board Member Coleman. I mean, I think procurement's a fishbowl scenario, and transparency is very important, and understanding what the statutory requirements is also very important.
Go ahead, Noreen.
I was going to say, I think the RFPs can be written to allow more leeway in our decision process and still remain within the law. My personal experience is that if the RFP is written with an evaluation criteria that allows leeway, you do not face any kinds of scrutiny from vendors who didn't get the bid.
Board Member Scott, you're correct, and we'll discuss that when we look at the other two RFPs. We do have Evaluation Criteria that talks about New Mexico-produced work, and it identifies a certain point value if they can prove that they've conducted work within the state of New Mexico.
If I may add, this particular one that we're talking about is an ITB. It's not an RFP. So there's the difference there as well. And we'll do RFPs when we're looking at something a little bit more complicated or complex. But this is an ITB. So that's the difference between an RFP.
And ITB is strictly priced, correct? I mean, that's how the decision is made.
It's responsiveness and price, yes, ma'am.
So I guess, here's my concern. We're looking at CTE, and we're looking eventually at having people trained in HVAC and a variety of other trades that will then allow our students to go to work in New Mexico. And that's why I'm making such a point about this, because those are folks out of Lubbock, Texas, who are going to have a job, not people out of Rio Rancho, New Mexico, or even out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. And so that's why it's so important for us to be thinking, as a school district, on a regular basis, on how we spend our money to continue to enhance and grow our community and provide jobs for our graduates.
Thank you, Noreen Scott. Lauren, do you want to chime in? Our counsel, Lauren Hatch?
Yes, Madam President, this is Lauren Hatch, the General Counsel. I understand the strong feelings in this area, and certainly the district should be concerned about making sure that we're spending money locally, but we have to do that within the requirements of the law. At this point, really, the board's options are either to approve it or to reject all the bids. Another option could be to table it, but I would recommend that you take action at this point, either accepting it, this recommendation, or rejecting them all. We can't re-decide how we're going to evaluate this ITB once the evaluation of the bids are open.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I haven't had the opportunity to talk.
You are more than welcome. Sorry, I was going with who had hands and such, but you're good to go. Go ahead, Catherine Cullen.
So there's very strict criteria for procurement laws, and I recommend that, since there are, you know, we have some newer board members to take some classes, New Mexico School Board Association does offer some of those classes, and hopefully we can get some of that information for you guys within the state laws. And then, of course, there's federal laws in reference to it as well. So it's very particular, and in really having this kind of open discussion on how we could sidestep the law, I don't think was really quite appropriate. But we'll move on from there. I was looking at these bids, and I can see why you guys had asked a number of times if these were correct bids, because they are really low comparable. So it sounds like, because you guys triple-checked all the figures, and they were good on those figures.
I would just like to state that I in no way am trying to sidestep the law, and that I very clearly understand procurement rules in the state of New Mexico. And much of it is driven by how you write the RFP or the request for a price. Now, Melanie's point about the procedure that we used is part of my point. We are not writing our RFPs to give our companies the best opportunity for success. And that's my point.
You know, and on that, and I'm going to ask Dr. Cleveland to talk here just a second. But, you know, I request, why don't we do a workshop meeting where we can kind of, you know, all sit down and come with all of our questions that we have on this and our thoughts on this, and see, you know, if we can generate a better way, or if we can all understand it better, too. You know, we talked about, like, finding out the statutes, and so we can kind of start with some of those things and to kind of move ahead. Dr. Cleveland, what would you like to add?
Well, I think that most of the things I was going to say have already been said by others, so I'm not going to have to. But I do think that having a meeting where we can sit down and look at that would be a positive thing. And I wanted to ask Mr. Madrid one question. Is the local preference community or state? In other words, can you have a local preference for Rio Rancho versus Albuquerque? Or is it, can it be by individual community? Or is it by region? Or is it by state? How does that work?
So the resident preference is actually administered by the Tax and Rev Section of the state of New Mexico, and it's statewide. So it doesn't matter if Rio Rancho initiates the procurement, or Las Cruces initiates the procurement, it's five points, or 5%, depending on whether you're using an ITB or an RFP. There is no resident minority, those type of preferences that are available through statute.
That was my understanding, but I wanted to be sure that it's either New Mexico or that the 5% doesn't apply if it was a Las Cruces company versus a Rio Rancho company. We're all considered local as a statewide entity. So I think that's another important thing for the board to realize, you can't say Rio Rancho versus Albuquerque, or something like that. And it is a push and pull. I mean, we do appreciate our businesses, and I think they do require to give us good prices. I do know that in the discussions in the legislature, a lot of that centers around helping local businesses versus spending the taxpayers' money as efficiently as possible. And I, you know, in those discussions, you hear that go back and forth, and I think the legislature has struggled to try to do that, to find a way to support our state businesses, but also to get the very best price that we can get. So I do think that a session would be a really good idea. There's really good arguments, and it is a good point. You know, our businesses do support us, and we're very appreciative of all the things they do for us. But we do have to follow the rules. And my last comment is, ITB is generally for smaller things that you need quick turnaround on, and are pretty standard. RFPs are generally for bigger projects like renovations or buildings or things like that. But thank you. Appreciate the information.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve award of ITB number 2021-007-FAC HVAC Filter Replacement.
This is Board Member Jeff Morgan, I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Nguyen Coleman and a second by Vice President Morgan. Kim, can you take a roll call vote for us on this?
Yes, ma'am. Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
No.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
It's four to one.
Okay, thank you. Motion. Okay. All right. For our next one is item E, which is to consider the award for RFP number 2021-011-FAC Eagle Ridge Middle School HVAC Replacement. And once again, we'll have Michael Madrid and Melanie Archibek presenting.
Thank you, Board President Galbraith, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Cleveland. This procurement was initiated using a request for proposal. The request for proposal for this particular one had the evaluation criteria of past performance, project staffing, the management plan, health and safety, New Mexico-produced work, and price. This particular scope included the demolition replacement of HVAC and plumbing of electrical systems, the new HVAC plumbing and electrical systems, demolition and replacement of acoustical ceiling tiles, and demolition replacement of floor finishes. In response to the solicitation, the district received eight responses. All the vendors, with the exception of one out of Albuquerque, responses were received from Anchor Built Incorporated, Brycon Corporation, ESA Construction, Inc., Gonzalez Mechanical, JP Henderson Construction. J.P. Henderson Construction Company, T.A. Colson's Construction, or General Contractor, excuse me, Thompson Construction Incorporated, and Wiser Electric. The proposals were reviewed and scored based on the referenced evaluation criteria. They were ranked, and recommendation is for Thompson Construction. TCI has the highest-ranked offer for this solicitation, and even though it wasn't the main emphasis, it also turns out that TCI Thompson Construction also provided the district the lowest price.
All right, thank you, Michael. Melanie, did you want to add anything before I go over to the board?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Questions from the board? Win Coleman? No, okay. Catherine Cullen?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jeffrey Morgan, any questions?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Noreen Scott?
I've asked all my questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Dr. Cleveland, do you recommend approval?
Yes, I recommend approval.
We have a motion. Jeffrey, you're not coming through on my end. I don't know about everyone else's.
Can you hear me now?
Not really good here. I may have someone else.
I'll let somebody else make the motion then.
Yeah, if someone else would be willing to make a motion on.
This is Board Member Coleman, and I move to approve award RFP number 2021-001-FAC Eagle Ridge Middle School HVAC Replacement.
I'll second that. This is Secretary Noreen Scott.
Thank you. And so we have a motion by Win Coleman, a second by Noreen Scott. Kim, can you take a roll call vote for us?
Yes. Board Member Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. So our next item is the consideration of award of RFP number 2021-010-FAC Mountain View Middle School HVAC Replacement.
Board President Galbraith, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Cleveland, this is very similar to the last procurement that you just heard. The evaluation criteria was the same. We evaluated proposals based on past performance, project staffing, management plan, health and safety, New Mexico-produced work, and price. The scope of work is demolition and replacement of HVAC plumbing and electrical systems, new HVAC plumbing and electrical systems, demolition and replacement of acoustical ceiling tiles, and demolition replacement of floor finishes. For this particular procurement, we received seven responses. Responses were received from Anchor Built Incorporated, Brycon Corporation, ESA Construction Incorporated, Gonzalez Mechanical LLC, J.P. Henderson Construction Company, T.A. Colson's General Contractor, and Wiser Electric. The proposals were evaluated based on the criteria that we just mentioned or that I just mentioned, and it is recommended that award for this procurement be issued to Wiser Electric LLC. And I also want to just make a quick note, even though that pricing wasn't the sole criteria for this one as well, it also turns out that Wiser Electric was the lowest price.
This is Noreen Scott. I move approval of the award of RFP 2021-010-FAC Mountain View Middle School HVAC Replace- Replacement.
Thank you. We have a motion by Noreen Scott. Are there any further questions or discussion?
This is Board Member Jeff Morgan, I second.
Okay, we have a second by Jeffrey Morgan. Kim, can you take a roll call vote for us?
Yes, Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you.
Board President Galbraith, before we end, could I just mention just one thing? I do want to extend the opportunity to any of the board members. If you guys have questions, I want to be a source, a resource for you to help get a better understanding of the process that we go through and the level of effort. I want to assure everybody that these procurements are not just done as a whim. I mean, there's subject matter experts that are part of the evaluations, and there's very much extensive effort to ensure that we're complying with statute, that we're meeting the needs of the district, and that we're also being fair and equitable to all the bidders that are responding to the procurements.
Thank you, Michael. And go ahead. Okay, we have a couple of questions from the board.
I was just going to say, Michael, and I think we've had, like, a workshop before on some things, and yeah, I think that would be a good thing for us to have as a board again on the procurement process. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Madrid, this is Secretary Scott. I would very much like to take you up on that. I would like to sit down and visit with you, and this, my comments are in no way a reflection upon you or your staff. It's about a general attitude that we need to have in New Mexico to help grow our economy. So it's just a general philosophy, but I would love to visit with you.
Very good. I would appreciate that.
That's great. Win Coleman? You're still muted, Win.
Okay, I actually put my hand down. And to Secretary Scott, I mean, I just want, I want you to know that I interpret that as passion and commitment to our community and to our state, so I appreciate that. And I do think that a workshop would be very valuable. I know that there have been questions, even that I have recently about things like policy, and so I think that it would be very helpful. And so I do appreciate everything that you do. I know that this is probably one of the things that can be a good, a big learning curve as a board member, so.
Thank you, Board Member Coleman. And Michael Madrid, and I see that, I know Dr. Cleveland's podcast is speaking just a second, if she'd like to, and Melanie, I just want to say thank you. And I know it got a little tense in here, but, you know, I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing. And I know that each and every one of us, as Noreen said, like, we all are so grateful for all the work that you put forth. We've had some, you know, it's some difficulties trying to update all these HVAC systems and all these different things this year, and so you've put forth a lot of effort to get those things done, and we are extremely, extremely appreciative of everything that you've done in regards to that. So thank you, and thank you for being so open and willing to talk to us. And we do, there are a lot of questions that have been coming down recently that I think would be very well worth to sit down and talk about those, about those things. Dr. Cleveland, do you want to add?
Just a couple of quick things. I also, you know, thank Michael and all the folks who spent all the hours going through this. Appreciate your time and effort. New Mexico has one of the most highly regulated procurement processes, and the reason that we do is that we have a state history of fraud. And so, you know, the desire to eliminate that and protect taxpayer money resulted in a pretty massive overhaul of procurement a few years ago, and I know a couple of you remember that. So I think in the effort to protect the taxpayers and the investment, the state got pretty tight on a lot of things, and sometimes it does. And so that, you know, there may at some point need to be some legislative changes that might look at some of these things, but that's the environment that it came out of, was the desire to make sure it is transparent and it's very carefully looked at, and that you get the very best deal you can for taxpayer money. The other comment that I did want to make, just not directly related, but indirectly related, is as we begin these projects, number one, it's exciting, because we've waited a while to get these underway, and they'll make such a difference in the overall comfort and safety of our buildings, safety in terms of COVID, which wasn't a factor when we got going on this, and certainly comfort, which has been there the entire time. There will be a lot of dislocation in those buildings, and the board needs to be prepared for that. They'll be very careful and do everything they can to move students around, but, you know, it will be worth it when it's done. And so that's kind of the thing we share with parents who may be frustrated with the extra noise or the extra, you know, problems moving in the building. And I don't know if Melanie wants to address this, but these projects are huge in scope, and my understanding is there's no way they could have gotten done over summer. And so it's a lengthy process. That being said, we have some experience in that area, and our projects have gone very well in the past. So Melanie, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. I just want the board to be prepared. You'll probably get some calls. You'll probably get some frustrations over the fact that a child's class ends up in the gym, maybe, or another place temporarily, but it's worth it. When it's all done, it will make a huge difference for those schools.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. I don't have anything to add. We do our best to try and complete what we can in the summer, so we cause the least amount of disruption, but these scopes are large, and we will bleed into the school year. Some of the ones that you'll be hearing about in the near future will be at least a year on those sites, but they'll be coming at the future board meetings.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Catherine, you have your hand up, but I think it was from before. I just want to make sure that I don't. You're good? Okay, you're good.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, you're totally fine. I just wanted to double-check. Okay.
I just actually did it again.
That's all right. So, you know, as we get to go to close today, I just, you know, I'm so grateful for our district once again, and for our board, and for all the, just all the wonderful, there's hands going up all over the place. I don't know if anyone's meaning to do that.
In solidarity.
I know. Renee, did you want to add? Did you know your hand was raised, and Janice was raised, too?
Funny. I actually do, and I apologize for this being out of turn, but I was able to contact the wonderful, who I failed to mention, senior assistant principals at Cleveland, it's Sean Havel, and at Rio Rancho High School, it's Betty Shapman, and asked them about how many seniors they currently had with one or more Fs. And it's, both schools are right around 150 students. Now, they did say that that changed, you know, it might be a different 150 students in a week, so we're just in that kind of last couple of weeks flux, but I know that you all wanted that information, and they were able to just give it to me immediately. They contact as many of those students as the counselors do, so I definitely should have included them in that number, but I wanted to give you guys that information.
Thank you. Thank you so much for getting that information.
Yep, and I'll put my hand down.
You're fine. I just was like, this is too, everyone's hands are going up. So thank you. And just on that last note, we have a great board who has just such varying backgrounds, which is what is awesome about our school board, is that, you know, with each and everything, we have people who understand all these different issues on different levels. And so I'm so grateful to serve with such, with such amazing individuals who have such great backgrounds. And so thank you to all of you. I don't, we don't get to say thank you to you enough, I think, at least I don't. So thank you, guys, for bringing all those things to our, to our school board and to our district. Okay, with that, is there anything else? Dr. Cleveland, do you have anything else?
Well, if we had done this in one night, it would now be 9:30, and we still have a lot of major things to cover, so thank you for coming in on a Friday afternoon, but it will keep us from going to midnight. And I also think it gave more time to discuss and think about things than we're trying to go through an extremely lengthy agenda. So we have about, you know, we have a considerable amount for Monday evening. So thank you for coming in, and Jeff, for traveling and staying part of this. When you, the board members are driving, one of the things, I am very attuned to emotion sickness, and so it's like being in the backseat of a car. And so I keep looking away from Jeff because I don't get any more nauseous, but anyway, thank you for even being on in the car. But I, we do appreciate, and I hope you found that doing it on Friday afternoon was probably the better thing than trying to rush through all of it on Monday night. So we appreciate it. We really do.
Thank you for thinking of that and planning that for us. We appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to move over to advanced planning, and I am going to read through most of these dates, and then if you please just refer to the calendars for the remainder. We're in that end of the year where there's a lot of things going on. So April 26, 2021, there's our next regular board meeting. We will, as a board, be in the boardroom if you are able to attend that. April 29 is our Audit Committee meeting at 4:30. May 3, we'll have a Finance Committee meeting at 4:30. Those meetings will both be virtual along with the next Finance Committee meeting, which is May 10 at 4:30 p.m. Then after that, also on May 10, we'll have a regular board meeting at 5:30 p.m., which will be, once again, in the boardroom. I'll just go ahead and go through them. Also, on May 14, there's just so many. We have our Rio Rancho Cyber Academy graduation at 5:00 p.m. at Haynes Park, which is awesome. May 15, Independence High School graduation. May 17, Cleveland High School graduation. May 18, Rio Rancho High School graduation. May 18 is the last day for Shining Stars. May 31, Memorial Day, and then June 3 is our last day of school. Also in June, we have on the 14th and 28th, regular scheduled board meetings. And so with that, tonight, or today, it's still daytime, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Bye, thank you, everyone.